I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Tralka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, so moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next will be public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom that wishes to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, please do so at this time. All right, seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And Ms. Peter?
All right. Our bill payment today is $2,055,216.63. And the 60-40 fund, we're paying $2,384.73. There's several kind of larger things today. The UNI funding commitment is on for a million. A number of the community funding applications for '24 are on to be paid. We have also purchasing some servers from ARPA funds for $77,000. And there's some little bit of capital projects in here somewhere to get to. $173,202 to Peters Construction for the courthouse is that renovation's kind of ramping up. And then for E-911, they're paying $213,580.97 for an upgrade to the radios. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions about anything?
Any questions, Board? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I'd like to give you an update on the road conditions, the flooding in particular. Right now, we have flooding in two major areas. Of course, the Cedar River Basin and then the Crane Creek area. The Crane Creek area. Team Road, which is on the county line with Buchanan County. Team Road is just south of Dunkerton Road. That is closed due to flooding, flooding from the Wopsey, backing up in that area. And then over on the west side of the county, the Cedar River area on our Cedar-Wopsey Road, the West Cedar-Wopsey Road. At our new bridge location, the water is over the, is in the boat ramp. That is closed, of course. It is, I believe, continuing to rise throughout much of the day today. That road is closed. The railroad is replacing the crossing just west of our bridge, the new bridge, between Union Road and Waverly Road. That road was due to be closed anyway, due to work on the railroad crossing there, so it is closed there. And also Team Road and Maxfield Road and Ford Road are closed due to flooding. Those are all gravel roads, so so far it is not impacting the paved road system. As always, I remind people not to drive through roads that are covered with water. Stay safe and do not drive on those roads. We do have 24-hour on-call staff. We are working with dispatch when they call and tell us the road needs to be closed due to flooding. We are out there putting barricades up, as well as taking them down when the water recedes. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you. All right, any other department heads, elected officials?
Morning, Board. Amanda Fesimer, HR Director. Just a quick reminder that we have the Breaking Free from Burnout second training tomorrow over at the Angie Miller Adult Learning Center at the MLK Community Hall. We've had about over 100 employees attend that and supervisory staff, so it's been well-received. And then also just that this is the first week that the new contracts are in effect and on the consent agenda, you are accepting all of the union contracts to be placed on file, which means we're doing a lot of work on updating all the pay scales. So we're just going to send out an email to staff just to kind of remind them to bear with us as we kind of work through this first payroll change with all the new pay structures and pay rates for fiscal year '25.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials which should provide an update this morning? Anybody on Zoom?
Morning, Board. Mike Henderson, Director, Blackhawk County Conservation. Just wanted to give you an update on the river impact to the conservation areas. Three parks are being affected right now: Blackhawk Park, McFarland Park, and Sigal Cove Park. They're all closed. Blackhawk Park probably will take the brunt of all of this. Their, the original forecast for the river was 95.4 feet. They have missed that by almost three feet. They're talking about a crest now. And I'm using the Cedar Falls scale when I'm talking with these numbers. They are now saying the crest will be around 92.8, so that's good news. It does kind of flip us upside down when they miss these forecasts this far. After the '08 flood, we did put together a policy that once we hit a 92.5 prediction, we do evacuate Blackhawk Park. We evacuate all the buildings. All the machinery comes out. The equipment comes out, and the park ranger prepares to leave the residence because at about 93.8, Lone Tree Road does go underwater, and that ranger would be stuck there, and all of our equipment would be stuck there. So we did take those precautions. We've moved everything out. It's a lot of work, but better to err on the side of caution. And we're, I guess, we're happy that they've missed it as far as they've missed it. So anyway, we will wait for the crest to roll through here, and then we'll assess damage, and we'll go from there. It's nothing new for us. It's just been nice to have three years of none of this, but it's back in our system again, so we'll deal with it. Do have some bad news for our work on the Casey Lake restoration plan. The flood has affected that. Also, Kelly, our contractor, is from southeast South Dakota, northwest Iowa area. That's where his residence is. He has been called, he has taken his crew and left here because of the massive damage up in that area. He has personal property damage that he has to deal with, and also he is working with the BS, or BNSF rail system, who is asking for help to get that rail system put back together. So he has left Casey Lake. He hopes to be back within a week to 10 days, and we certainly hope he gets back in that timeframe, but there's got a little bit of a lull with that. So the flood's affecting us on a lot of different levels, but we will keep you updated, is all I have.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads or elected officials which should provide an update this morning? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved from the June 18, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next will be the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. We'll now move on to contracts and agreements. Item A, this is resolution to accept and approve change order number one for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail Division One paving contract with Bruning Rock Products Incorporated in the amount of $7,533 to address drainage and erosion issues on the west end of Spring Creek Bridge on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail and add steel plates at that, at the bridge deck and approach joints on both ends of the bridge. The change order increases the current contract with Bruning Rock Products Incorporated date September 19, 2023, from $1,831,919.31 to $1,839,452.31.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, item B, this is resolution to approve the fiscal year 2025 County Substance Abuse Program contract of $10,000 with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. Authorize $30,000 in match from Blackhawk County opioid settlement funds to be used toward planned activities. Enter into subcontract with Pathways Behavioral Services, Inc. for completion of work planned activities and delegate the Blackhawk County Public Health Director as county agent for the contract and associated subcontract.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You just comment anything?
No, I just was here if you had any questions.
Any questions, Board?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Hearing none, this is resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, item C, this is resolution with contract for library services between Blackhawk County and the Board of Trustees of the Public Libraries of the City of Janesville, or the City of Cedar Falls, Duncanport, Evansdale, Hudson, Janesville, LaPorte City, and Waterloo, a total amount of $201,824 for fiscal year 2025. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Leyland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Resolution that the agreement to provide $1 million to the University of Northern Iowa for the Unidome renovation project, previously approved October 17, 2023, be acknowledged and signed by the chair.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
I was gonna, I was just gonna comment, Chris. I guess I could have done it with my vote too, but I said, I know looking at this initially, and all of us probably agree, this just seems like a formality kind of at this point because of the action taken in October, but it became a little more personal for me, I guess, just because I, as you know, I didn't support the action in October, and it was primarily because of the fact that I thought our own infrastructure needs. We hadn't identified some of the costs and things out there that we have pending for ARPA dollars as well as possibly reserves. And so it was just taking a closer look at what we had for our own needs. And I guess an opportunity just to reinforce too, is I think you all know though, and I'm mostly saying this for the board, not for the public, that it was never the dome project. That's always been a great project. We've been supportive of it. There's no question in any of our minds probably of the economic value it is to our community and what an asset it is. And just as they were looking and used a capital campaign to look at their infrastructure and bring that up to date, I said, that's what I guess I think we are doing too, looking at our county's needs and the infrastructure, and just want to make sure that we look at the county first, and then when the board decides that they would like to switch priorities or that they feel a project is more important than something that we have as a county project too, that we take action and do that. So I just, yeah, like I said, kind of came with a heavy heart today just because I'll vote no on this, but it's, like I say, not because of the project at all, just because I, I want to make sure that the county infrastructure is considered first and foremost, I guess, in our minds, since especially you and I and others are able to tack, or to do capital campaigns where our options are maybe just to tax. So that's all. I just want to do that rather than just do it when I voted, so thank you.
All right, any other discussion or questions?
I have had a couple of questions about if I needed to explain why it took so long to get this here. It did take us a while to negotiate with you and I what we would pay for or how we would do that. So we are not contributing. I think they first thought we would just make a donation to the foundation that they would use in the future. And Attorney Train and I worked with them to say, well, I, we would prefer to reimburse you, so when you start construction, we wanted pay estimates, and we are also paying the university directly and not running it through the foundation, so it's well documented. We also have research on file that it is allowable for us to make a payment to a state entity. I don't know if there's anything else we need to review with that, but we tried to tick all the boxes to make sure we are doing this appropriately.
All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
No.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to other business. This is item A. This is a motion that the county auditor be authorized and directed to transfer $125,000 from the general fund to the self-insurance property slash liability fund for fiscal year '24 as recommended by the insurance committee.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item B, this is motion that the cost allocation plan for fiscal year 2023 submitted by Cost Advisory Services be certified and the chair direct to sign the certificate as approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item C, this is resolution that the 2024, 2025 property slash casualty and liability insurance coverage and risk management services renewal as recommended by PDCM Insurance with primary coverage through the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, ICAP, in the amount of $822,972, a 12.6% increase, be approved and direct the chair to sign as recommended by the insurance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to item D. This is resolution that the amendment to the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 18, 2024 include a second bid from Murphy Tractor and Equipment for a John Deere motor grader in the amount of $450,420 be approved from Elford Incorporated, 8400 West Sixth Street, Southwest Cedar Rapids, Iowa, $476,872. And Murphy Tractor and Equipment bid number one, 3649 West Airline Highway, Waterloo, Iowa, for $461,915. And bid number two from Murphy, $450,042.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Give me a comment. Yeah, I'm bored. I was just gonna come on this, comment on this. Last week when I opened the bids, I did miss bid number two from Murphy. It was all in one package. I just immediately went to the back of the paperwork they submitted. The difference is they're both John Deere motor graders, 772 oil dry motor graders. The difference is the snow equipment, the wing in particular, is different between the number one and the number two Murphy bid.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is resolution. Roll call, please, Mr., roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Hall?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. This is item E. This is resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Murphy Tractor and Equipment, Waterloo, Iowa, bid opening was on June 18, 2024 at 9:07 a.m. for the purchase of one John Deere 772 GP motor grader for fiscal year 2025, the Blackhawk County Road Department, with a bid of $450,420, be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I was going to mention that I would recommend that you take this low bid from Murphy Equipment. This is a new type of wing for us to try out. Our bid number one had a hinky wing. That is taking about nine months to get that snowplow wing, so we are going to try out this new wing at the lower price. We went and looked at it at another county. They have a fleet of these wings, and it does look like a good product. We would like to try it out. And I should also mention that we did budget $500,000 in our FY '25 budget for new motor grader.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. This is item F. This is resolution with the lowest reasonable bid received from Don Truck Sales, Fairbank, Iowa, bid opening was on June 18, 2024 at 9:05 a.m. for the purchase of one single axle Freightliner 108 SD dump truck in fiscal year 2025, the Blackhawk County Road Department, with a bid of $216,932, be approved and as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that probably one of the reasons we only received one bid on, on this Freightliner truck is that manufacturers are still, Freightliner is still limiting the number of trucks that they are giving to their, their outlets. And we prefer to buy a turnkey truck. That means a truck with the snowplow equipment already on it. Some of the dealers do not give us that full service. They will sell us a truck, but they won't put the snowplow equipment on it. We did ask in this case for a turnkey truck, truck with the snowplow equipment. That's probably why we got the one bid. We have, we have a long history of working with Don's Truck Sales, so I would like to recommend that you do accept a bid from them. We did budget $225,000 for a new single axle dump truck with snowplow equipment in the FY '25 budget.
Kathy, this is Tom. When's the delivery?
Delivery is still probably the spring, February, March of 2025.
And there's, is the chances, don't exist anymore that he'll come back later and say it cost him more money and we have to change the contract like we've done before?
Yeah, like that happened a couple of years ago. That has not been brought up by any manufacturer in the last few years. It seems that, that the prices are holding steady. Apparently, the manufacturers have, are not expecting an increase in steel, is what happened a few years ago. That seems to be holding steady. I, I can't promise that that won't happen, but there, there have been no indications. I haven't heard from other engineers that that has been going on lately, so I'm hopeful that, confident that this will be the price, the delivery price.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next is item H. This is a motion that the appointment of Michael Butler to the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective July 1, 2024, for a term of three years. Oh, I skipped one.
Again.
Oh, go back, okay. Item G, this is resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Wright Environmental, Incorporated, Waterloo, Iowa, for fiscal year 2025 Waste Disposal Services at the Blackhawk County Courthouse, the jail, the Pine Crest Building, as well as the JCS Building on Lafayette, Secondary Road Shop on Longfellow, and Gilbertville Shop on Raymond, all located within Waterloo or Gilbertville, with a bid of $2,220.25 per month be awarded and for the chair to sign the contract conditional to the receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Roy Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions?
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facilities Director. As you know, this is our second stab at this, and we did receive two bids. One from Waste Management, who is our current provider, and then this one from Wright Environmental. Did want to point out that this recommendation does come in about $5,500 under what we had budgeted. We had budgeted $29,260, and this total bid is $23,754, and that we actually added two additional locations on this with secondary roads. So with that in mind, and with the review of Wright, I do recommend that the board approve this.
Roy, what were they doing in the past, secondary roads? What service were they using?
Blackhawk. Uh, Blackhawk Waste, Tom?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwacher.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Now onto item H. This is a motion that the appointment of Michael Butler to the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective July 1, 2024 for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. This is item H. This is resolution to approve the subdivision plat submitted by Russell O'Connor to minor plat 1.57 acres located north of 33935 Gilbertville Road into one lot zone AR Agricultural Residential District pursuant to Section 354.8, the Code of Iowa. The property in question is adjacent to Gilbertville Road and the Indian Creek Road intersection, and approved that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County recorder.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions?
It was unanimous, correct? I was gonna say, I didn't know if you were gonna read, do any reading or not today, but...
Yeah, yeah, I'll, yep, I'll go ahead and read through this. At the regular meeting on June 18, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request by Russell O'Connell to plot 1.57 acres and order to construct a new single-family home north of 3935 Gilbertville Road, which is, and then request by Russell O'Connell to plat 1.57 acres in order to construct a new single-family home north of 3935 Gilbertville Road. The 1.57 acres in question is located at north of 3935 Gilbertville Road, which is adjacent to the Gilbertville Road and the Indian Creek Intersection. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request rezone the area from A to AR. The Board of Supervisors approved the rezonement request in April 23, 2024. Surrin Eric Assisted Agricultural Land with Semerel Homes. The minor plat area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map, becoming one of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. A smaller portion of the minor plat is located in a special flood hazard area. However, there's adequate amount of land within the plat area to construct a home outside of the flood plain. Site has land evaluation score of 44 and a least score of 160. The applicant intends to remove as few trees as possible during the construction of the new home. Ryan Brennan with Blackhawk County Department noted that the applicant should contact the engineer's office to ensure the driveway location is okay, if they have not already done so.
Do we know if they have done that? Oh, okay. Sue, yeah, please do. No, please do. It's great to have you here.
I'm Russell O'Connell. I was requesting this. Yes, I've already met with, with those guys. They, they met me out there. Very helpful. They laid it out. I do have a permit for the driveway, and I just want to say that they were very, very helpful on this, how to lay it out, and gave me some good suggestions. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. So this is it then for me, right? My last? Yeah, so I'm done.
Your last time here.
Thank you.
Last thing goes wrong.
All right. If this...
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to thank Lexi Blank for her hard work in my absence due to my medical condition, and she's been doing a great job, and I think, yeah, I, I haven't been able to really talk to her too much because I've been at home. So she probably was unaware of the fact that usually we just, you know, we just basically have, you know, usually not here for the minor plat, so that's why. So she, she didn't know, so. But she's doing a great job. But she's doing a great job. I'm very impressed with her.
Good to have you back. It's good to have you back, Seth.
Oh, yeah, she's very sharp, very sharp young lady and I'm just very happy we have her.
Nice to see you, though. Thanks, Seth.
Is there further, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Ms. Shawalter.
Hall.
Yes.
Traka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, item nine, any reports or information from the Board?
All I have is a short email that Mr. Garnett, when I followed up with him, he sent out, "What type of timeframe are you thinking about putting things on a schedule and making resources at Blackhawk County available to work on this? Are you thinking August, September, sooner, later? Let me know and I'll use that information to work up a full-blown contract proposal, scope of work, as well as schedule a draft of dates and then we can refine it after that." So I just thought...
I think August is a good, you'd get started.
I mean, we can refine it obviously, so that we could, but a place to start or, but I didn't know schedules were gonna be people working, but okay, throw out an August date.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we give him sort of a scope? Is that something that we need to add to next week's meeting to have sort of a work session to talk through what we want?
I'll certainly follow up with him. I thought, I wasn't sure if he was gonna kind of help lead that or whatever, so I'll see if that's what we want to do and add it. Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item 10. This is the work session, Community Services Funding Presentations for Fiscal Year 2025. First, we have Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity with Dusty Wilson.
Good morning, Board. My name's Dusty Wilson, the Development Director at Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity here in town. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here and present to you guys quickly. Thank you also for considering our grant request for community services funding for this fiscal year. I'm sure many of you are aware Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity is part of a larger nonprofit global organization focused on affordable housing. Our local affiliate's been incorporated since 1990, so just over 34 years of work in this community, serving Blackhawk, Bremer, Buchanan, and Butler Counties. We offer three primary programs, Affordable Home Ownership, which is kind of the flashy one that everybody knows about, but we also focus on critical home repairs and a new program called Blueprints, which is essentially financial coaching. Obviously, our homeownership program provides first-time home buyers the opportunity to purchase an affordable home with a 0% interest mortgage. Our Critical Home Repair Program provides repairs to existing homeowners that preserves the viability of their home. And our Blueprints Program just provides consistent case management services to help participants become qualified for a conventional mortgage. Our specific grant request for this year was for critical home repairs. In recent years, we found a significant demand for this program, which complements our traditional program Affordable Home Ownership really well. Like I said earlier, participants in this program are existing homeowners requiring repairs and/or modifications that ensure their home remains a viable housing option for the long run. Our aim is to address improvements that could otherwise jeopardize the housing and financial stability that a family has worked hard to achieve. Just something to consider here, neglected repairs are something often exacerbated over time. Further, a family is, if a family is older and lives on a limited or fixed income, such as social security, may be unable to complete or afford repairs on their home. And as construction costs increase, it's not uncommon for a family to choose between completing such work or affording other necessities such as utilities, food, medication, or even transportation. Families can quickly run out of options, allocating funds towards one problem usually tends to neglect another, finding themselves forced to either relocate or live in undesirable conditions. Excuse me. Additionally, through the county's 211 hotline, there's been indications that housing and shelter is the leading category of all requests, 31.2% of all requests, which leads all categories. Moreover, those in need of housing and shelter assistance, home repair and maintenance represent the greatest unmet need for assistance, with 25% of all requests for home repair and maintenance assistance being unmet. We currently have over 100 families on our waiting list and we do follow a non-discriminatory policy for selecting partner families to serve and serve households who earn below 80% of the area median income, with a particular focus on 30 to 60% of AMI. Much of our work is targeted in the historic Walnut and Church Row neighborhoods, which have a very visible connection to downtown Waterloo here. Many of our critical home repairs include building handicap accessible ramps that allow families to age in place, installing new windows, doors, roofs, furnaces, and siding that provide safety and security as well as other weatherization, and repairing bathrooms and foundation repairs to maintain the integrity of the home. Families are always asked to make a sweat equity commitment, whether by themselves or another family member, and a financial contribution to the repair in proportion to the scope of their project. As I kind of mentioned, many of the repairs that we do are aimed at accessibility. We have a great partnership with the NE3IA here locally. Almost 60% of all repairs that we do are aimed at the higher-end accessibility elderly segment of our population. Additionally, energy-efficient designs and repair improvements generate financial savings for homeowners by lowering utility costs, which is typically the second highest monthly expense after mortgage payments. Based on a study that we did, that we underwent with University of Northern Iowa by push of John Deere, we came up some stats or we found some stats that are specific to our The work is transformational for a family. Safe and stable housing is linked with positive generational outcomes. Children who grow up in strong and stable homes are 25% more likely to graduate high school and 116% more likely to graduate from college. They're 35% less likely to need government assistance, 59% more likely to own their own home within 10 years of moving from their parents' home. Additionally, when homeowners buy and remain in a home, they are 10% more likely to work on, work to solve local problems, 15% more likely to vote, and live four times longer within our community. Stabilizing housing markets is linked to vibrant economies, ample employment opportunities, and strong businesses, all of which spark significant impact for Waterloo as a place where families want to invest. The process itself, our home repair manager visits with all applicants and completes a full repairs assessment on the home. After the assessment is complete, the scope of work is decided upon us and the homeowner to commit to completing the repairs in agreed-upon timeframe. Additionally, until that assessment is complete, we're unable to provide a specific line item budget with the grant request that would detail exactly how the funding would be reused, but we know on average that repairs cost around $5,000. I think it's $4,200 this year, this fiscal year that we spend on average per repair. So a fully funded grant of $15,000 would help us complete somewhere between one to four Just to reiterate, those repairs are typically related to roofing, siding, window replacements, front steps, accessibility, electrical, furnace, AC, all of those things that a low to modest income individual or family may need to stay in their home. Just wanted to reiterate a couple of stats too quickly. This fiscal year, which will end next week, will complete 65 home repairs in our community. And we've set a goal to aggressively grow that number to 90 next year to meet the growing needs of our community. We have current funding commitments that cover approximately 60 repairs, so we are in need of new funding to meet our goal and to ensure that, you know, this growing issue across the nation, not just in our community, is able to be met by local partners like us.
So do you have a goal then of a funding pool that you try to have, like, so you have to earmark?
Yes, yep. So obviously, as part of our just generic funding that we use, all of our families that come through our homeownership program make timely mortgage payments. I think it's almost $500,000 a year that comes back into the organization to help sustain us. We also have a restore here in Waterloo, which over the course of the last five years has helped us build around 15 homes. So all of the profits that come back through that, almost $500,000 a year, come back into our program. Then we also have a Leadership Giving Society that really gives us the opportunity for unrestricted funds that we can use on this. We also have great partnerships with organizations like InterCog and a lot of the grant requests that we write for local organizations, CFNEIA, Waterly Community Foundation, are focused on critical home repairs.
I believe you said about 65 were helped this last year?
Correct.
And so that's kind of a rule. Are people, I guess, as they can request these funds or ask for the assessment, is there some piece of it that's kind of a critical need that maybe, or they just first come, first served? You said there's a waiting list of 100. Are there people then that maybe have more critical needs that maybe move up and...
Today, it is first come, first served. Some of the repairs are basically administered when funding comes in the door. So that's why the waiting list is so long. It's not to say the people won't be served relatively quickly. Unfortunately, just until we have the funding for it, we can't, we can't do the assessment even. So it is not based on, you know, scope. It's really, that name's picked off the list, the assessment's done, and then the repairs are done from there. Obviously, if it's a, you know, if the scope's a little bit smaller, the repairs can be done relatively quickly and in a more timely fashion to get us to the next person.
So in this list, and I know this is just a guess probably on your part, when you have a list of 100 that are on a waiting list, how many, how long a period has that been that maybe people have applied and need not?
Typically with, within 12 to 18 months.
12 to 18, okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say, I really love all the work that you've done on infill development through Church Row and Walnut Court. And I like, really appreciate the commitment to the historical preservation of these homes too. It's really adding a lot of value to those neighborhoods. Thank you. Any other, any questions, discussion? Okay. All right, thank you, Dusty. Next, we'll move on to Friends of the Family with Alyssa Trapp.
I am Alyssa Trapp. I'm the Grant Manager at Friends of the Family. Friends of the Family is an organization dedicated to ending homelessness. Our vision is that everyone has a home. We do serve about 25 counties throughout Iowa, so we have kind of a large impact throughout Northeast and North Central Iowa primarily. The project we're requesting funding for is the Blackhawk County Housing Project. This program is dedicated to ending homelessness in Blackhawk County through a multi-pronged method using street outreach, diversion, progressive engagement, and rapid rehousing. Our street outreach project is designed to get out on the street and talk with people currently experiencing homelessness, either in shelters or physically living on the streets. We start with building trust and rapport, so we kind of build a relationship that will allow us to best understand their need for homelessness and also allow them to trust that we are here to help them get into permanent housing. Our diversion and progressive engagement program is kind of designed to meet people where they're at. Not everyone needs a long-term program, and so by having diversion and progressive engagement programming, we can meet people with their specific needs that allow them to get into permanent housing as quickly as possible. And then lastly, our rapid rehousing program. This ranges from about 12 to 24 months, depending on the program. Our goal is to get people out of homelessness and into housing as quickly as possible and then provide the supports and services they need to maintain their housing on their own long-term. Once a participant is in services, each participant receives case management and advocacy. This includes, but is not limited to landlord advocacy, benefit connection, information and referral services, life skill building, financial literacy, and employment support. All of our services are tailored to the individual's unique needs, and so what one person may receive may look entirely different from what another person receives. They're all focused on helping clients maintain permanent housing and build their self-sufficiency, so when we leave the picture, they're able to stay in their housing long-term. This program is also supported by our Landlord Navigator. This position is designed to build connections with private landlords that then allow us to get people into housing quickly through these partnerships. Often, these partnerships are willing to waive some of the traditional requirements that may limit people who have a criminal history or eviction history. And so it really helps reduce the barriers for some of the higher need population that we are serving. The program is also supported by our Transition Specialist. This position is designed to build employment connections, so when participants are housed and ready to gain employment, we can connect them to our employer partners. With this project, our goal is to have at least 80% of program participants exit to permanent housing by the end of the project, have program participants go from experiencing homelessness to housed in an average of 30 days once they complete intake, and have their, at least 30% of program participants increase their income in order to support long-term self-sufficiency. 90% of program participants will access mainstream benefits and resources, employment and education counseling, medical or substance use, mental health treatment services, if they so wish to receive those, and then all program participants are offered financial literacy education. Just to give you an idea of need, the last completed fiscal year, which we're getting to the end of this fiscal year, so it would have been almost a year ago now, but the last completed fiscal year, we had 308 households experiencing homelessness in Blackhawk County who actually reached out to a provider or were connected with a outreach staff in some agency to complete a housing assessment. This was people considered experiencing literal homelessness, so they were on the streets, in a shelter or somewhere else uninhabitable, but only 22% were able to be served due to lack of housing programming available in the area, so. Can I give you an idea of need? Questions? Or, sorry, did you have anything else? No. Okay.
You said 22% of that 308.
Yep. Well, they were, either they were served like, not necessarily an FOS housing program, but some program in the area, or we knew that they exited the list into permanent housing. Sometimes that's one-time assistance, sometimes it's just landlord advocacy, but yes, only 22% that we know were actually able to exit during that timeframe to permanent housing.
So roughly 250-ish folks, households left?
Yes. Do you happen to know what's the list like now? Yeah, it's, right now in Blackhawk County, it's at a little over 120 of what we know for sure. So that's just whoever calls into any of the access points in the community that can do the assessment or walks into our building or hospitality house or the shelter or something like that.
What do you view as the barriers for those 150?
I would say a lot of it would be like criminal history, whether it's that or rental history or lack of rental history. We find that a lot, like lack of rental history or like when we are applying with the clients who are in our programs and they don't have money and landlord requirements continue year after year to get more and more strict. So requiring three times your income, requiring your credit score to be a certain number, several, several barriers like that into getting just approved to get into a unit, even with ongoing rental assistance, so. That, mental health, obviously there's substance use. So there's a long list and everybody's different, so yeah, it's a lot of different barriers that we see come through, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the Boys and Girls Club of the Cedar Valley with Brian Burton and Bailey Moore.
Morning, all. Thank you for your consideration today. My name's Bailey Moore. I serve as the Director of Operations for the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Cedar Valley. In place of Brian today, I have with me a board member, Hector Salamanca Arroyo, and we're here today just to talk about Boys and Girls Clubs Project Learn that'll encompass all of our programming that we do through fiscal year 25 and really just our commitment to doing whatever it takes to build great futures for our young people. So I'll start off a little bit about what we do. You know, your funding, your consideration goes to supporting, of course, the most popular things that we do are after-school programs. So those programs that run from August through May, about 3:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m., unless you're one of our club teens, in the case you're able to be served until 8:00 p.m. During those after-school program days, we do snack and a hot meal for all of our young people, along with all the programming, different offerings that we have. For some of those non-school days, so conferences, they do professional development days. Boys and Girls Club is open from 8:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. on those days to ensure that those young people have the support that they need. On those days, we serve breakfast, lunch, and a large snack to make sure that our kids never go hungry and they never feel like they're kind of secondary. One of my favorite things, one of the biggest programs that we run is our summer program. We're in it right now. So starting last week, running through August the 9th, we'll do all-day camps, again, 8:30 to 6:00, serving breakfast, lunch, a hot, breakfast, lunch, and a snack before they go home. Big focus for our summer program this year, mornings are focused on academic enrichment. Big one for us this year is on literacy and reading retention. We all know the, you know, your third grade reading level, making sure that they are capable of reading. If you can't read, you can't do a whole lot of things. Afternoons at the club are focused on fun, physical activity, and field trips, so really trying to get our young people out into the community, maybe seeing things that they don't see normally, and really just giving them an opportunity to get a little bit more... And really just giving them an opportunity to get a little bit more involved and to really kind of spread their wings, get some interest in things that they maybe did not know about before. We also do family nights for all of our families, so this Friday we'll actually have a summer kickoff carnival that will encapsulate really an orientation for our club families to make sure that they know exactly what the club offers and how they can be supported. As we get closer to the fall, we'll do a backpack drive, giving out backpacks to all of our young people, making sure that they go back to school successfully.
So as a board member, I'm really here to tell you that the Boys and Girls Club does work. Out in Colorado, I was a club director, I've been a STEM specialist, I've worked firsthand with the kids. To me, the Boys and Girls Club is an organization that knocks it out of the park when it works with kids, especially the club here in Waterloo. The club here in Waterloo dates its history back to the 1960s. This club is instrumental to the foundation of not just the city, but of the youth that it's worked with. We've had individuals, you know, such as Mayor Hart go through the club, we've had individuals such as DeCarlos Anderson go through the club. These are individuals that have come to the Boys and Girls Club and have found what they need. Similarly, in today's day and age, currently, the club serves 971 registered youth from ages 6 through 18. That's a big swath of kids. If you've worked with kids, you know that you got a six-year-old who needs to go, you know, to the bathroom, and then you have an 18-year-old who's kind of moody. So it's a large swath of kids that we work with. Out of that, an additional 405 youth are served through community outreach. So these are kids that may have a buddy who goes to the Boys and Girls Club, may have a cousin, may have a friend, sister, et cetera. They're able to be reached by our programming. Additionally, when we ask parents how they identify when it comes to household, currently 62% do identify as single-led, single-parent households, and 100% of the youth that we serve are free and reduced lunch-eligible. Additionally, on top of that, there are 260 teens currently being served, which is about 26% of the membership at the Boys and Girls Club. These are teens who go to schools such as West, East, and Expo.
Sorry, how many, how many teens?
Uh, 260.
Cool, thank you.
Yep, so the four facilities that we currently operate out of, it's three standalone facilities in the summer, four during the school year. Of course, everybody knows the 515 Lime Street that's been in operation for the last 57 years. The newest built facility on 815 East 4th Street, our teen and educational center that sees those 260 teens every single day. The newest addition to Boys and Girls Club standalone facilities is the old Elkhorn Preschool Building on 316 McCoy Road in Elkhorn Heights, Iowa, taking the Evansdale Club, Club from a thousand-square-foot strip mall to now a 33,000-square-foot facility that has a gym and a playground. So we can really get the increased membership there quite substantially, as well as make sure that they've got room to move around and run around. A back alley of a parking lot is not a great place for kids to run around and try to be active. And then the final site is supported by a 21st Century Community Learning Center grant through the state of Iowa, housed inside of Lincoln Elementary School. So Project Learn, what we've come to you all to request funding for really encapsulates all of our different programs that we offer to our young people throughout the year, starting, of course, with educational enrichment. During the school year, we call that Power Hour, so that gives young people an opportunity, an hour a day, to make sure that they have their classwork done and done well. So that way, they can continue to be successful in the classroom, make sure that they have all the skills and all the things that they need throughout the school year. For our summer program, we like to call it Summer Brain Gain, really building upon the successes that they've had in the previous school year and ensuring we don't have a lot of summer slide as they get into the next school year. Excuse me. Our next set of programs involve character and leadership development skills, so our Smart Girls Program and our Passport to Manhood Program, our gender focused on making sure that our young people are successful as they transition out of the club and into adulthood or into whatever they see for themselves next in life. We also do a Smart Moves Program for our youngest group of kids that's really just focused on building quality relationships and really kind of helping them understand boundaries and, you know, teaching what's right from what's wrong. Within that, we also do what we call a club within a club. So for our teens, that's called Keystone Club. It really enables them to be leaders within the organization, to kind of drive and direct the programs and the offerings that are seen at the club. For our younger kids, that's called Torch Club, and again, very similar. Gives them an opportunity to be leaders within the club amongst their peers. For our teens, we do what we call Career Exploration, Career Launch. So throughout the year, we'll have four different types of events. Starting right away in the fall, we'll invite organizations in to talk a little bit about what they do and why they do it in the community to make sure that our young people really know what's out there. What we'll do next is we'll invite all those organizations in. Last year, we had about 22 come into our teen center and went through really a mock job fair. So that way, when people could go up to those organizations, ask questions, learn about how they could become employed in the future. As we get to wrapping up the school year, we go through mock interviews and doing a little bit of resume building and support for our young people to make sure that they're ready for growing competition in the job market, to make sure that they're set apart from the rest of the competition. And then over the summer, during those field trip times, we have opportunities to visit some different factories, really just different businesses in the community, so that way our young people know where these places are at and where they'd be going to. And of course, our most popular thing is our sports and recreation programs. So throughout the year, we'll do different, you know, football camps, baseball camps. Our big program that we run for sports and recreation, we call Triple Play. It focuses on the mind, body, and soul, so really giving that holistic approach to when it comes to recreational sports and activities, you know, being a, a good team player, working well with others, good sportsmanship, and the likes.
So we had a little photo here, but won't be able to see it unfortunately. But when it comes to the club members that we serve, one of the club members that we want to highlight and to show you the different types of programming that happens at the club is Jonathan. Jonathan has been going to the Boys and Girls Club here in Waterloo since he was six years old. He's now a 12-year-old at Central Middle School, so that's half of his lifetime. Jonathan, as soon as he comes to the Boys and Girls Club, gets off that bus at 2:45, walks into Lime Street, grabs a snack, says hi to Ms. Delfina, grabs his snack and goes and reports to Power Hour, where he's able to get help with homework. From there, Jonathan, and if you know Jonathan, he's a, he's a shy kid, Jonathan will go and head upstairs to meet with his favorite staff member, which is Mr. Isaiah, who's a graduate from East High School and leads, or and was a member of the esports team at, at East. Mr. Isaiah has really helped Jonathan develop his skills when it comes to coding, his interest in video games, and his interest in technology as a whole. Jonathan, from there, after he's done, you know, learning about digital literacy, after he's done learning about the digital technology that we have at the club, he goes and has his time to work on his own little coding project, as well as with Mr. Isaiah, learn more about esports, which is a, a sport that has really grown in the past couple of years. From there, Jonathan also gets a meal at the Boys and Girls Club, and additionally, he'll be able to go outside, and he goes outside with his best bud Ian, where he's able to play soccer. And if you've been to Lime Street, you know that there's that little grassy patch where the kids go and play soccer. So he'll actually kick the ball, and him and Ian will take turns shooting at our little black fence around there. So for Jonathan, the club not only has been instrumental to his academic achievement, but also his social-emotional learning. For him, the club, as the son of a recent immigrant who's primarily Spanish-speaking, as the oldest, for him, the club is where he's allowed to be a kid. He's not having to translate for his mother, he's not having to take care of his siblings. At the club, he can be who he really wants to be, which is a kid that enjoys playing video game, a kid that wants to go work in IT when he's older, and a kid who, without the club, would not be able to access the technology and the opportunities available. So when it comes to the funding, the funding that we're requesting is going directly to kids like Jonathan. Kids who, without the Boys and Girls Club, without the accessibility to programming that is affordable and free, at the most part, these kids would not be able to experience the opportunities. As Bailey said, the number of field trips that the Boys and Girls Club takes over the summer, the number of opportunities, the number of chances, for a lot of these kids, it's a game changer. And it's something that, when you're thinking about funding the organization, I think you have to take into account. That kids like Jonathan depend on the club, where for them, it's about their future and giving them the tools necessary to succeed.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, next we'll have Little Knights Learning Center, LaPorte City Campus. Edmarine Hanson.
Good morning supervisors, Edmarine could not be here today. So my name's Jasmine Gaston. I am the city representative on the Little Knights Learning Center Board. I brought with me our secretary Haley and our vice president Carolyn took over our presentation today for you. So the purpose of our board and what we're looking to do is to open a daycare center in LaPorte City. Over a handful of years, even dating back to 2017, when we attempted to do this back then, our in-home daycare, daycare centers are closing at a rapid pace, where parents are trying to have to find places for their kids to go, whether it be they work up here, so they're then having to transport their kids, so then their kids can't do pre-K in LaPorte, or they're just not coming to town because they don't have anywhere for their kids to go. So our goal is to provide a safe place for kids to go, a place for parents to take their kids and not have to worry while they're at work, whether they have to get them into preschool, whether or not the daycare's going to be open, that there'll always be someone there for them to take their kids to. So a little bit of background on the project. So like Jasmine mentioned, our original efforts for this project started in 2017 to kick off to see, is there an interest in LaPorte City? A similar project was also kicked off in Dizert, so I know it's not in Black Hawk County, but there in our school district, we share a school district of union. They also had an immediate need at that time where we didn't have that immediate need. They kicked off their project, and they actually opened, started in their elementary school in 2019. So it took a couple of years for them to get going, opened in their elementary school, and then while they were there, they proceeded to raise funds and they built a building, which they opened right next door, and they started that in 2021. When our childcare needs emerged to be more urgent, like Jasmine mentioned, we also resurrected our efforts in January of 2023, so just last January. Over the last 10 years, estimated more than 80 childcare spaces in our community have been lost, with more closures anticipated in the next year or two. So really, LaPorte City is designated as a childcare desert by the Iowa Childcare Resources and Referral. What that means is that we have over three times as many children as we have available childcare spaces. In our community, it's actually a ratio of four to one, so we exceed that ratio even considerably. So we really are in need of childcare for our children. In fall of 2022, we did a community survey, and more than half of the 72 respondents said they are currently looking for childcare. We've done some surveys more recently, fewer respondents, but similar trends in that data. So we really do have an urgent need in our community to have childcare available.
Sorry to interrupt you, you said how many responded?
Uh, 72 responded in 2022. Yep, and half of them said they were actively looking for childcare. It's, we also had a presentation, but I'll try to give you some stats, and if there's any questions on things, let me know. So we did another survey again in 2024, and just to ask a little more detail about why people were looking and some of those additional questions. The top three reasons why they were seeking childcare, lack of availability, so we know that. Location closer to home, so like Jasmine mentioned, some people are having to take their kids. My daughter goes to a daycare here in Waterloo instead of in LaPorte City. And then also cost, so people are looking at cost, and we know that those things are expensive for their families. We know that we need this for our current and prospective families, so we want to be able to bring families to our community that help support our school district. Our enrollment is down, and we'd like to see that increase for lots of different reasons. And also the livelihood of our community, the businesses, these, you know, activities, all the things that are in our town relies on families coming to and staying here with, you know, with their families. According to recent data, most recently collected in the past five-year window, Black Hawk County as a whole has seen a 31% loss of childcare centers. So we're hoping to reverse that trend for the good of all of our families. We do have some plans that we'll talk to you more in depth here. Our current plan is to follow the same path that Dizert took and start with opening in our elementary school. Our center will meet 50% of the current childcare needs immediately that we saw from our survey. We'll touch on more a little about ages and what we're going to provide in our elementary program. Data is showing that two- to three-year-old childcare is our second highest need after infants, so this will meet that two- to three-year-old need in the elementary school. In the future, we will have infants in the full center, we'll talk about some of those details and some reasons for that. But our plan really right now is to start with that elementary center program, and then we'll continue to work towards our center. And Haley's going to give some more information about childcare centers.
Yeah, so it's really interesting that, you know, Iowa's considered one of the top states in the nation for parents working outside of the home, and one of the things that is such a huge, impacts that so largely is childcare, right? And approximately one-fourth of the state currently is in a childcare desert. And the effect, uh, some communities that are affected the most greatly are those smaller communities, those rural communities, including ours. And having most recently been a fifth-grade teacher in the district, I directly saw the impact of how that's currently affecting us. Considering that in LaPorte, we used to have grade levels with three sections each, and now we've dwindled down to two within each grade level, being a pre-K 5 building, that's, affects me greatly and affects so many of our families greatly. So there are many benefits that come with having a childcare center, which is our ultimate goal. So this, first and foremost, allows us to be open year-round, okay? If you think about in-home daycares, which are so greatly needed and appreciated, but those households can be affected by sickness, vacations, that then affect parents who need to take their child somewhere so that they are able to go to work. So having a year-round open center that is not affected by summer, that is not affected by holiday breaks or weather-related closures will greatly help those families to not interrupt their day and what they need to do. Also, having a center, we currently have four-year-old preschool, which is currently half-days. So this allows parents who have children within that program to have wraparound care, where they are directly transported from the school to our center safely so that they do not have to come and pick them up and transfer them to appropriate childcare. And we're also hoping that in building the center, we have a high request of families who would like to see a three-year-old preschool program come back, and we are hoping as a long-term goal to have that return as well. We haven't had it for approximately three years, and parents and families have said that that would be so wonderful to include within the center. And Dizert is expected to open their three-year-old preschool program this next academic school year. And so we want to see that, help them grow and thrive in that way. Also, similar to working in the world of education, staff within a center have to be licensed, of course, and have proper training and background checks. We want to be a center, like many others, that is of high quality and is safe for children and parents to bring their kids to. And this also allows classrooms to be set up more appropriately by age so that they can develop social, cognitive, and motor development appropriately with peers. And in general, other than affecting the school, it's going to positively impact so many other things, such as our area businesses, helping build our employee base within our community, and encouraging future families to come and set roots there to help everything grow in the process and be successful. As Carolyn was saying, she herself, like so many others, I bet you guys maybe in this room have been personally affected by childcare needs or know of family or friends who have been impacted by that. With her having to go to Waterloo, for example, that takes a big chunk of travel time. So when it came time for preschool, the only way they could make it work with a half-day program was to take their son to Dizert, to the center there, which meant going back, back and forth, which was approximately two hours a day in terms of travel time. And so a daycare center would allow families to keep children within classes and programs to help them.
So the next slide that we had was timeline, and there's a lot of detail on here, so I, hopefully, we can share that with you guys afterwards for your information, but, and so I won't talk through all of it, since there's no visual, it's a lot of words. But like I mentioned before, we started and kicked this off in 2023 in January. We formed the board, made sure we had our Arts of the Corporation, all of that good stuff. In February of '23, we began fundraising. We did some typical fundraisers, some more grassroots type of thing in the community, but we also started forging ties with the Union Community School District. We hired Levi Architecture for site plan, business plan, and a pro forma, so working with Iowa Childcare Research and Referral, they have wonderful resources. And staff, we're working with Mary Jansen, she's amazing, helping us figure out first-year operating costs and planning of construction, and what's really our goal and what we're working towards, and putting the pencil to paper to make sure we, you know, know what we're working towards. Those relationships helped us start with getting a lease agreement with the Union's Community, Union Community School District in August of '23, where we received the deed to land for the center's site, so where our future building will be constructed. We do have the deed to that, that land. It is just south of the elementary school, which is wonderful because they can walk the children back and forth for that half-day preschool program, before and after school care. And it's just wonderfully centric to the elementary students that will be going there. In 2023 November, so last November, we also kicked off our capital campaign and the design for the building. So Jasmine's going to show you some rendering, actually, we've got in the booklets, we've got some renderings. And so we kicked off that capital campaign to really look at our major donors in the community and start to get the capital campaign raised to build the new building. This past May, so just a couple of months ago, a unique opportunity emerged for us to explore an option in our own elementary school. So like I mentioned, Dizert did the same thing as well. With the reduced class sizes, like Haley mentioned, there were some rooms available in the elementary school. And so we approached the elementary school to say, is this a possibility? Could we start in the school, meet the community needs years ahead of schedule as opposed to building that building? We still plan to do that certainly, but how can we meet those needs or at least some of the people who have that need more quickly? So in this past, I think it was also in May at their school board meeting, we signed a lease agreement to use four classrooms in the school and a adjoining kind of space in between that was a furnace and storage room. And we're going to make that our director's office. It's, we brought our architect in to take a look at the space and he said he's never seen a school situation more well-suited for a daycare situations. Other people do this too, they open in schools. And so there's a lot of construction that has to be done, doors that have to be installed. This already had external doors, it already had the sinks in the rooms, it already had bathrooms in the rooms. So it was, we have a couple of things we do need to change. We have to change some counter heights of sinks and a couple of smaller things. But we are hoping this fall to open in the school, which is very exciting for us. We've got some work to do, we've got some things to figure out, students to enroll, people to hire. But we are going to be able to meet those needs two years earlier than expected. In two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are still working towards building that daycare center. Like we mentioned, we, we won't have infants in the school. That may be clear for some obvious reasons, but it's a little more difficult to have babies in a school as opposed to two and three-year-olds that you can keep a little bit further from the kids who are trying to learn maybe to read or do their math a couple of doors down. So we will have two-to-three-year-old children, we'll have four-and-fives, including half-day wraparound preschool. And then also before and after school care for the children of our community who today don't have access to wonderful programs like the Boys and Girls Club in our community. So our kids go home or go to an in-home or we try to find something else. So we are still planning on building that center. We're continuing to raise capital and do fundraising. We're doing in-kind donations. For, our plan is to do in-kind donations for the center if possible with our local community businesses to help, you know, support them and have that partnership. We're doing lots of grant writing. We come to things like this where we have generous people who are willing to hear us out. And also community donations. Our total estimated budget for the center is two-point-eight-five million dollars. And that's based on current market square footage estimates and first-year operating costs. Some of that will be decreased with our first-year operating costs in the school. So things like, you know, the buying furnishing supplies, some of those things that will move to the center with us, so that number will come down a little bit. Hopefully, construction costs won't go up to match it. But, and then yeah, to drive costs down, we are hoping to work with community members and businesses to secure those in-kind donations. Let's see. So, who's doing current plans? It's still me, okay. And so our plan, like I mentioned, it will still be a registered daycare center. It will be licensed and registered, just like it would be in the center. Ages two through twelve, so those two and threes, fours and fives, and up through school age. And we will accommodate up to one-hundred-and-two children, but we won't be starting there. We are going to scale up appropriately to make sure that we have our hiring in place, the enrollment settled. And it's really a great opportunity to get us started in a smaller setting before the center to get any kinks ironed out and make sure that we are running smoothly and we can increase the capacity in those classrooms as we are ready and make sure that everything runs smoothly. We currently have a waitlist of families actively requesting that reliable, safe childcare that we are working towards. So we actually already have more families on the waitlist than some of the rooms we'll be able to open up and start with. But we know the needs there and we're going to work hard to continue to expand that capacity. We are preparing to submit our proposal to the state for approval to renovate those classrooms. Like I mentioned, those counter heights, a couple of door changes. That'll happen in the next few months, followed by bids and construction. We're hoping to have the construction done before the start of the school year, which is a quick turnaround time, just to minimize noise, dust, all of that. If we have to go into the school year, they've done it before. They've had construction in the school during the, during the school year. So they have had experience with how to do that within Laporte City Elementary even. But we're hoping to get that done as quickly as possible. We're going to also start interviews with employment very soon. And then once our opening date is more defined and set, that's when we are going to start those enrollment packets and getting families signed up. And hopefully, I'm very excited because we are signed up for half-day preschool and I'm hoping this will work out well for my family as well. And then a little more about the future plans.
Yeah, so currently on our waitlist, I was just checking, we already have approximately fifty children on our waitlist. So that's good when we have more formal plans to announce. I anticipate that number to certainly go up. But beyond that, future plans, obviously, once we start in the school, we want to get to a place where enrollment continues to go up and we're eventually pushed out. Like Dizert is, the ultimate goal is still to build an independent center right next to the elementary. And we are going to continue to work with Levi Architecture to make that happen. They've been a great partnership. And Mary Jansen of Iowa Childcare Resource and Referral has been such an expert and a guide for us as well as Dizert within this project. And eventually, when we do open up within our own independent center, it will be a fully licensed infant-to-age-twelve childcare center that, like I said, will eventually also have three-year-old preschool. And we are considered officially, we have achieved nonprofit status as a 501(c)(3) the end of two thousand and twenty-three. So we do have that as well. And when we do build, or even, we toured a lot of different childcare centers as a part of our research in Blackhawk County and beyond. And all of them say initially build bigger. Because there's a lot of childcare centers that have already had to add on to their space to accommodate families within their community. And so part of that cost would certainly be to accommodate the children we will serve. So we're really excited to go about that process and make that happen. So with that, we will open it up to questions. And again, we really want to say we appreciate your time. There are so many wonderful presentations you've listened to today, and so thank you very much for having us here.
How many, how many spots will you be able to provide when you're in just the four classrooms?
The max is one-hundred-and-two. We're going to start, we're going to do, it's fifty percent of full capacity. We're going to do even half of that open. So I think it's twelve kids per room, forty-eight kids, about forty-eight kids. Forty-eight to fifty is what we'll start with and then build from there.
All right, thank you. What are the hours?
Six-thirty to five-thirty is what we have tentatively right now. There are a lot of things that we're still, once we talk to, once we hire our director and get some of those things figured out. But right now at the school, you can drop off your children as early as seven-forty for breakfast. But if people need to be at work by seven o'clock, seven-thirty, that makes it tough. So we're going to make sure we're open early enough for it.
And then you said, uh, goal was two-point-eight-five million? Have you started that campaign to get that, what's the status of that number? Were you?
Yep, yep. So we have about two-hundred thousand dollars in grants received so far. And we have about two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars in pledges. So when we're doing pledges with our capital campaign, it's a one-to-five-year pledge. So a lot of our community members are doing five-year pledges, which we went with so that we were getting money as an ongoing basis. So, and we've kind of taken a break from that just because this new opening in the school thing came up and it's just a lot to do a capital campaign and open. So once we're open, then we're going to go back and, because we missed some people that we didn't get to in the beginning, so. And continuing to apply for grants, right? There's a lot of, especially grant cycles, right? Some places we're being encouraged to apply to more than one grant cycle and. Yeah, specifically, we've been, Maureen's been talking to Blackhawk Gaming Commission and we will reach out to them, but she meets with them every quarter to decide if this is the right time, is it not? So.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, next up we have PGC Outreach with Carmen Teague.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here. This is all new to me, so if I quit breathing. Okay, so PGC Outreach, that's the name of our company. I named it after my dad, Philip Lynn Caldwell. He died of COVID a couple of years ago. But our program is called Cedar Valley Thrift and Outreach. You might have seen this around because we do a lot of advertising. So last year, March of twenty-three, I decided I wanted to open up an outreach center because I missed the old St. Vincent and what they used to offer to us, as me as a kid and my grandma. So I went to, I have a mentor, her name is Shani Young, and I was like, I want to open up outreach. I said, but I don't want to be inside the box. I'm a totally outside-the-box person, as you'll get to know hopefully. So it's like, I told her that in like January, by March, I had located a building. I mean, and so I took my own money, my 501(k) and some money my dad left me, found a building and I opened it up. So in the meantime, we were trying to become a nonprofit, but I had this long name, which everything from now on is going to be way shorter. We had to change the name of the company because I made it else up anyway, but I got help with that. So the first year, I basically funded the building, the outreach, with my driving school bus. So I paid the bills at the store and at their, so this past year, we finally got grant money. Northeast Iowa Community Foundation granted us in March, which was awesome, then the Germsy Foundation. So what we do down there is, we're an outreach thrift store, but I communicate basically with all the outreaches around here from domestic violence, criminal violence, homeless, just anybody that's in need. I don't care about no finances, how much money you make or whatever. So last year, when I was doing all this on my own, I started doing community meals. Well, I grew up, my great-granddad was like, you want to show somebody some love? If you came to his house, the first thing he would ask you, are you hungry? And he didn't know your name, he didn't know nothing, you just feed people. So that's how I show my love and my family, we like to feed people. So I had started doing community meals like on a Wednesday, but I was trying to work at the hospital during that time and cook and, and it just got too much, then I had to have surgery, so I had to stop. Also, I am, I used to help open up Chipotle's around, so I knew about serving safe food. So it ain't just like, you know, we just throw a bunch of slop together and all like that. But now it's way more organized. So this past year, I decided I wanted to get back to doing our community meals because people were coming and asking us, are you going to do community meals again? Because last year, in like a six-month period, we fed over five-hundred people. And I mean, that was like, would help, like Flips let us have a Thanksgiving dinner out of there. People donated, I purchased, we purchased food, Cedar Valley, we served over two-hundred-and-forty-one people Thanksgiving dinner. And that was like turkey, ham, sweet potatoes, I mean, the whole nine yards. I believe just because it says community meal does not mean that their quality of food has to be something that I would eat on my own table. And I'm, I just, that's just my heart. And I've learned that you can take a little bit and make it into a lot. And I'm good at that too, because like, my great-grandmother used to cook the same amount of food on Sundays and we have a very large from ten to twenty and it was always enough food, you know? I love that part in the Bible where God fed people with the fish and the bread. That is like my theory, that is just my go-by thing. So anyway, so we started our community meals again. That's what we're asking for funding for. We started off with a free community meal, but I want to continue it throughout the whole school year. Because we started last June seventeenth, last Monday. Last Monday, we had sixty-nine people come in. Last Friday, we had fifty-six. Last, this, yesterday, we had seventy-eight. We served two-hundred-and-three people with three meals already. So it's a need out there. We do it on Mondays and Fridays from four to six-thirty because that serves the people that gets off work later. You know, we have, we have churches in different places. Churches do community meals like once a month, which is fine, you know, everything, every little bit helps. But a lot of other programs are lunches. And then, you know, the Salvation Army hasn't picked back up yet from where they were serving the lunches. So we missed out on that. And then a lot of stuff closes like four, you know? So what about the people that come in afterwards? And my thing is, I don't want anybody to go to bed hungry. Just because I work hard and try to take care of my family, me and my kids shouldn't go to sleep hungry because we have no food. You know, the cost of food has gone up, believe that one. But I just want to feed people, so that's what we do. And one of the things in our budget is, I want to give somebody a part-time job because say I am about serving safe food. So I would like the same person to consist of cooking the food. We have people that volunteer like desserts and stuff. But like yesterday, I cooked all that food after I got off the bus. You know, but I love doing it, so it seems like a lot, but it is. But I just, it's, it's my passion, as you can probably tell. I love, I just love helping people. So the, the money would go towards cleaning supplies, aluminum cooking containers, food, paper supplies, advertising flyers, which I try to do everything that costs efficient. I try to take a penny and stretch it forever, I really, really do. And then a part-time employee. Right now, I work with Hudson's Meats. They give me good deals on meats. I have like food stored in somebody else's, in his store's freezer, where he gets a good deal on some meat coming in and he'll call me and we go down there. So I have been preparing for this anyway, getting a little bit here, a little bit there. We did invest in our nice refrigerator so we can keep stuff refrigerated. It needs to be held at a certain temperature. Then we did invest in like, you remember when you were in school, those warming carts? Where you could put the meat and food in there and it could hold up to four to six hours? Because like I say, I want to make sure everything is safe. And I'm so nervous, I know I'm skipping over a whole bunch of stuff. We do, like I said, like, oh, and we partnership with, we work in a partnership with the Food Bank so we can get food at a reasonable cost. I'm in the process of just, I went through the first phase. Now I'm filling out the application, but the orientation and stuff doesn't consist till August. So I got that part taken care of. Tyson's Food has donated to us. The community really, really supports us in a whole bunch of different ways. And we're trying to even continue to support ourselves, you know, like we got a, we work with the Catholic Charity House. They bring their clients down, so that brings in a steady income for us going because the thrift store has to continue to thrive for the rest of it. But our thrift store, you come in here, we have really, really nice clothes. If you ever look on our Facebook page, you'll see, because I post everything. But we have a standard, just because you give it to us, don't mean I have to give it to somebody else. But it doesn't go to waste. It goes, we have, it's a company up in Sioux City, One Vision, I think it is. They come down, we got a big cart, so let's say something is stained or ripped and I won't put it in my store, but I donate it to them. Then what they don't use, they have a store up there and what they don't use, they send it overseas. So everything we get gets used to something. Just like the food that's left over, I have a small pan of tur, yesterday we had chicken wing, I mean, chicken legs, mashed potatoes and gravy, pears and dessert. But I have a little bit left, I'm going to take it to the men's shelter. I try to rotate that around so nothing gets wasted. I just want to continue to keep on being able to serve people. Or like, we work like domestic violence, sometime like one day the Food Bank was closed. But sometimes those calls we get are late at night because we have a food, a small food pantry that we start on our own with non-perishables. But this lady was in a domestic violence and she was trying to get away. They were putting her up, she didn't have any money. We did have like peanut butter, tuna, but then we gave her money to buy bread, you know, and milk and stuff like that. So I mean, even after hours, because I tell people all the time, they're like, well, what's your store hours? Our store hours are eleven to five Monday through Friday, ten to five on Saturdays. But I get phone calls in the middle of the night where stuff is going on and I have gotten up and went down and got something for somebody to eat. But I don't know if I'm making sense, am I making sense? But it's just, I get so compassionate, I know I'm supposed to stick to five to ten minutes, see that threw me off. But that's what I'm here to ask for help for, to continue. And, 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 and we're going to keep growing, you know? Like I said, when I was putting my own in, money into there, it was like I learned that you can have a little bit and make a lot of difference in people's lives. It's not always about us. I'm a school bus driver, I interact with all the kids. I have the other bus drivers interact with their kids. We give out flyers, you know, when we have different stuff. Last year, we had a big old back-to-school thing where we had like brand-new Sperry's and Jordans and people with tags. I turned it into a whole dollar day. I don't care what was on there, how nice it was. And then we had like walking tacos and people donated ribs. Then we had a big thing in the parking lot where we have bubbles going. I've, I charge everything a dollar because I work hard every day. I want to be able to buy my kids something for school. But bullying in the school, because the year before I did a back-to-school bullying thing and got uniforms. But bullying in the school is real and it's horrible. So I sold everything for, so those kids, the first week, I know they felt as good as that next person because they had on nice clothes. Like I said, if you ever get a chance, come down and see the shop, you will love it. It's just, it's not, you wouldn't even think, people, a lot of people say this is not, it doesn't even seem like a thrift shop. It doesn't have to be, just because you're in hard times or you just don't have enough to make it. But you want your family and your kids to not go to bed hungry and to be able to look as nice as the next person that they sit next to. Okay.
Where's your shop located at?
Nine, sorry. We are located at eleven-oh-nine East Fourth Street. You know where Speller Hardware is? I painted the building green. It's a little, we're in between, like before you go to the railroad tracks, you pass us. You got Speller's Hardware, then it's a little street, then it's a little buildings, like three buildings there. Where ours is painted lime-green because I want the people to know where we are.
They're right there on Dane?
Right before you get to Dane, that's us over there, please stop there. And we try to come up with different ways to, you know, to help bring in money to help. Like tonight, we're having a fundraiser at Applebee's. You order from that one menu, we get fifty percent. So anybody can hear me, come out and support us. But the thing is, if it was up to me, I would just feed everybody every day. And my kids, they'll tell me, Ma, you need to quit doing that. But the things in our store too, like all infant clothes, whether it's new tags, whatever, is a dollar. All kids clothes, and I mean, we get the rip pants, I mean, really, really nice stuff, is two dollars. Adult clothes, shirts, three dollars, jeans, four dollars. We have some dresses down there right now, ladies, that are like a hundred-and-eighty-nine-dollar tag on them. We have some dresses down there right now, ladies, that are like a hundred eighty-nine dollar tag on them, they're twenty dollars. But I mean, come on, but I mean, we get nice, nice stuff. And it ain't where I'm trying, you know, people always say, well, Carmen, you know, your prices is too low. No, they're not. Because in the first place, it was given to us. And if we can make one person feel different in that day, I work with uh, promised jobs. Um, now that their clients need um, clothes to go on interviews, if they have no funding, we donate it to them. But if they wanna come in and buy, they can pick and choose more, you know, what they want, they can feel as good as anybody else. We work with homeless people and people from um, the halfway houses. If they get out and they have no clothes, we give them five outfits. They can, but one has to be addressed where they can either look for a job or go to church. I don't ask no questions, they just show up and I just help them. Any questions?
Uh, so meals are served Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Fridays.
Tuesdays and Fridays?
Yeah, my theory with that is, okay, we have, I know one of the churches, um, every Tuesday, Impact Church does a meal. I know Saturday is a church over here, and then on Wednesdays is another church. But my thing was Friday, when somebody comes home, and our portions be like, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to make nobody obese or nothing, but I give them decent portions of food, I know that night they're going to bed. Hopefully, they had a meal in between, but Monday, they will not go to bed hungry again if they didn't have anything. Plus, like I said, we got the little food pantry, so they can take stuff. I just give them a bag and just say, hey, remember, it might be other people, I don't sit there and count. I, it, it's just not in my heart to do that. And so like I said, like our first meal, we had spaghetti, which I made, that was good too. We had spaghetti, green salad, garlic bread. Um, and then we had, this lady made homemade uh, strawberry cupcakes. Then our next meal, we had um, uh, chicken Alfredo. And we had Parmesan corn. And we had um, um, mozzarella bread. And then this lady made chocolate cakes, and we give out water with that. Yesterday, we had, like I said, um, chicken legs, macaroni, I mean, um, mashed potatoes and gravy, and pears, and then we had desserts. But then like this week, we're probably gonna have like smothered pork chops and rice. Because I went down to Hudson and it wasn't the loin, but like the ends of the loin, he sold it to me at a real cheap price. So he cut them for me and everything, so we can afford to give people a pork chop, you know, and some rice. And it's gonna have probably, I like like, cut up peppers and onions and, you know, and um, tomatoes and make a little sauce like that sauce. So that's the kind of stuff that we serve.
So, so you average about fifty folks a meal, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, like I said, that's only three, cuz it, see, I got sixty-nine, seventy-eight, fifty-six. And the way we do that, we start off with like fifty containers, and we know, we only add twenty-five at a time, that way we can keep track if we get low. So that's how we're keeping trout, track, track right now.
And then roughly how much, just, just the ballpark, ain't gonna hold you too, but roughly how much does it take to, to put on one meal for fifty folks?
Okay, I had two cases, two and thirty, about a hundred and fifty dollars, something like that. Yeah, because um, like I said, I go around, I'm a good beggar.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, but, but I take like, we have people that donated big old cans of vegetables and stuff, you know? I tried to get some from Hy-Vee up there, but they were already closed, are different people. And then also, we have a meeting with um, and I'm learning all these different organizations, that you and I, you know, the extension where they do the, um, where they have a garden? Yeah, we, so we have a meeting with the director there coming this week, he's gonna come down and he's putting out an email asking people to donate vegetables to us and stuff like that. Because then like I said, then we, we already invested in a free, a refrigerator. But then uh, somebody's donating us a freezer. So my grandma's teaching me how to take the, the garden stuff, even though I knew as a kid, but you know, we're gonna get away from that. But knew as a kid to take some of that and freeze it, so we can use it throughout the year. So it's not like, you know, we just, we need to keep going. And we were also able to, I have a, on my school bus, I talk to all my kids, I have a eleventh grader that has all her credits and don't have nothing to do, so we're hiring her, that's through the service, but she's gonna work with the community meals. We giving her an opportunity to learn some worth ethic, but also reach out to the community and be helpful, and she just loves it. So on Mondays and Fridays, she comes in and works for three hours, help get a setup, it helps serve. And learn to talk to people, interact. Cuz if you don't have good community service or be able to talk to people, which I can't believe I'm saying this, but um, it, it'll stop you from going a long way. So we, I mean, our store is more, I'll tell you, it's more than just a thrift store. We have people like from River View, a guy comes down in wheelchair, he comes and just folds clothes, get out, you know? Last year, we didn't even have an air conditioner, somebody stole the air conditioner, but we got a whole new air conditioner. So people can come, and also when it's too hot, come sit down and um, just enjoy yourself. It's a, it's, it's just a safe place.
So you did the meals, you said, on Tuesdays and Fridays, what?
Mondays and Fridays.
Monday and Fridays, okay, okay, alright. And that's the four to six thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Time, and your thrift shop does open when?
Eleven to five, eleven to five, Monday through Friday, ten to five on Saturday. If that's even, even with the community meals, people come in for a meal and they see what we have. And people have been shopping with us, so you know, that helps out a lot too, it's like a double thing. Because I want people to be aware of what we have, but some people think, oh, it's a thrift shop, or you know, or the stuff probably too high, but I mean, really, I really, really would like you guys to like us on Facebook, cuz we have some, I, I be like, I love to go through the stuff. Cuz I'd be like, wow, but it, it's, it's just awesome to make a difference in somebody's life.
And you said you've received support from Community Foundation and?
Ernsty. I'm done.
Alright, any other questions, Ward?
Please, please like us on Facebook. And you know, Ma, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna share this, I have some board members, they're like younger than me, but they're people that are go-getters. And like even training people in the store, because you know, am I, I don't want everything to be about me. You know, yep, it, it was my baby, it's my dream, but if I get sick, I learned that when I got sick last year and had to have surgery, the store went to a halt. So the people that are supporting me board-wise and in the store working are people that can keep on going. Because I don't ever want this to not be able to keep going because of me. Why I shared that, I don't know, but anyway, I'm done for real.
And you didn't, and you didn't pass out?
There you go. See this envelope anywhere, that's us.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a final presentation from uh, River View Center.
Hello, Board, how are y'all doing today?
Good.
I try to, um, we'll try to let you guys have some time back to your day a little bit here, so, um, some of y'all know me, some of y'all don't, I'm Sam Blatt, I am the Development Director and Public Relations Person for River View Center in this area. And I will let Desi introduce herself.
Yep, my name's Desi Holmes, I'm a sexual assault advocate with River View Center, I'm the lead advocate out of our Waterloo office. And I've been with River View for over five years now.
We love Desi uh, so much, she does, every time I see her in our office, she is always doing something so, so great for our interns, for our clients, for our staff, whoever it is. It is, I love everyone that we work with in our Blackhawk County office. Um, thank you so much for the consideration for this request today. Um, we are requesting funding for fiscal year twenty-five for the Blackhawk County Outreach and Awareness and Sexual Assault Intervention, Intervention, excuse me, Services. Um, through this initiative, we will work with rural law enforcement, medical personnel, social services, um, and any other first responders to better, and will better understand how to connect with survivors about sexual assault and abuse, um, provide them services, um. And we will, they will be received in the rural area of Blackhawk County, which includes Dunkerton, Elk Run Heights, Evansdale, Gilbertville, Hudson, part of Janesville, Jessup and LaPorte, LaPorte City and Raymond. So a lot of um, the towns that are outside of the Waterloo Cedar Falls area where is like considered the heart of the Cedar Valley and where more access is, we are able to go out and provide more access for people who don't always have as much. Some people who are considered some of the most vulnerable people. That includes people who are um, you know, in the, in the Atlas Survey, forty-one percent of people living in Blackhawk County are making less than the basic cost of living. Um, but we're able to fill those gaps and you're able to help us do that. Um, and it's through so many different ways in which we collaborate. We are no stranger to any of the barriers you've heard of from like the six presentations before us. We, survivors come in all walks of life, whether they have a home, whether they are unsheltered, whether they have a family, whether they are a single person, whether they are four years old or eighty-four years old. Um, and whether they are living here in an urban area right downtown and can access us. Or if they're in one of these many towns outside of the rural, excuse me, outside of the more urban area in our county that especially need access to these services. And that's what Desi and our advocates and interns do for our rural areas. Um, so I'm gonna let her share a little bit about our services, what we do and what we've done in the past year. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about what that looked like um, in terms of our, our statistics and what that will look like going forward.
Thank you. So if you're not familiar with River View Center, River View Center is a free and confidential services for survivors of sexual assault and their loved ones. Um, we never ask survivors to share their story with us, it doesn't matter if the sexual assault happened yesterday or if it happened twenty years ago, we understand sexual trauma kind of carries throughout the lifetime, and we're there to support them with that. Um, we do a lot of different types of advocacy as well as peer counseling and therapy. Our advocacy oftentimes looks like the medical advocacy. We go to the hospitals, they call us when a survivor presents after a sexual assault. If they wanna get a rape kit done, we're there to walk them through that process. We dispatch our SAENS and, um, which is a sexual assault nurse examiner in Blackhawk County. Um, we are there to talk to them about medications afterwards, um, to prevent STDs, HIV pregnancies. Um, we are there to go with them to follow up medical appointments if that's something that they wish. We also do the legal advocacy, a lot of times that looks like going with survivors to report to law enforcement, they want. Um, coming here to the courthouse to help them obtain a no contact order. Um, talking to the county attorneys with them, going to court with them. Um, you know, going to Iowa Legal Aid with them, anything legal related you can think of, we're there to support them with. We also do general advocacy, and that's kind of like everything else. So whatever basic need they have, um, whether that's shelter, housing, food, um, anything, we try to commute, uh, connect them to the appropriate community resource. So like Carmen said, we work with Carmen a lot, she's really helped a lot of my survivors who are homeless or just got out of jail and don't have anything. Um, she's allowed them to come and, you know, like she said, take five um, outfits, um, and provide them with meals. Um, we've also worked with friends of the family to help shelter or house our survivors that are fleeing from violence. Um, we also do, like I said, the peer counseling and therapy, so us advocates, we do peer counseling with survivors. We do a lot of listening, validating, um, and just kind of supporting them through that emotional um, process. Um, we know that a lot of our rural areas are under resourced, there's, I believe there's only like one food pantry in Evansdale, the rest in Blackhawk County are either in Cedar Falls or Waterloo. Um, we transport survivors to the local food pantries, or we'll go on their behalf and we'll take them food. Um, we go into the schools to meet with young survivors. Um, the schools, especially in Evansdale and um, oh shoot, LaPorte City have been very welcoming of us to meet, we oftentimes use like Counselor's Office to meet with survivors. Um, we're able to meet survivors in their home, and that's really important for our rural survivors because of the lack of transportation or resources. Um, just kind of whatever needs they meet, we're able to be mobile and come to them, um, and provide that support. We also know that only two percent of sexual assaults in the rural counties are ever reported, which is a very low number. Um, and so being able to be accessible in those rural counties is very important, so that they, they know their resources and the supports to kind of go through that process. Um, just because two percent are reporting to law enforcement, that doesn't mean sexual assault is happening less in the rural counties. There's just a greater lack of uh, resources and there's greater isolation in the rural counties. Um, we do uh, make going to our rural counties a priority. We want to go and be at all of the events, um, community outreach, we do presentations in the school um, and other community partners or businesses, um, to talk about sexual assault, the impacts of it, how to respond to those situations and how to support survivors. Um, you know, like I said, it wouldn't be possible without the collaboration of our community partners, like friends of the family and Carmen at the thrift store with the schools. Um, I'm also the current chairperson of the Cedar Valley Victim Resource Coalition. Um, so they, they are also members, we also have the county attorney's office, law enforcement, schools, um, other victim service agencies that are a part of this coalition, we work on specific projects in the community to decrease violence. Um, but also, you know, that's a great resource for us to email and say, hey, I have a client in need, I've already tried resource X, Y, and Z. Does anybody else know? And I've been connected to um, other community partners and members and businesses, you know, to donate a bed to the survivor. You know, or um, just kind of meet whatever unique need that they have, that maybe there's not a resource, typically a resource out, that's, you know, advertised. Um, I know Sam will kind of talk about our uh, VOKA cuts, which are, which are federal, federal grants or grants?
Uh, funds, funds.
Yeah, federal funds that um, all victim service agencies are receiving, are anticipating to receive a huge cut from. Um, and you know, our services right now are very comprehensive, so it just kind, it goes beyond just the sexual trauma, the um, you know, the, the results of the sexual trauma to meet those needs. Like I said, we provide that transportation or taking them to the food bank, you know, that's beyond the sexual trauma. And so we just kind of, you know, meet their needs wherever they're at. Um, but with these cuts, we would look at, you know, what is the core of what we do, which is crisis response to rape survivors. Um, and so everything else that I just talked about that we do, which is above and beyond, um, would look at, and especially in our rural counties as well, um, with limited travel, you know, it's not ideal to meet with somebody over Zoom. And if they're already isolated in a rural county, um, we wanna make sure that we're there in person and that we have um, the funds and the capacity to be able to do that and continue going to outreach in our rural counties.
Um, as Desi said, we know that the, if you're gonna hear me be a broken record about how we always try to meet people where they're at, that's just what we do, that's our value. And that's, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the mission of the community and what we do here in Blackhawk County anyways. So we certainly don't, with the expected cuts, um, you know, we, we want to make sure that we have that extra funding to be able to do that holistic case-by-case approach, because certainly, no one deserves just that one-size-sits-all approach. I mean, everyone is different, and you heard that from other presentations, it's, again, not a stranger for us either. Um, some of the, some of like our stats from the, in the past year is, just in Blackhawk County alone, we served two hundred and sixty-four survivors. Um, with three, with three thousand five hundred and fifty hours of service. Um, and as Desi mentioned, sixty-four of those were hospital calls, so our SAENS, um, helping work out, helping work on that. Our advocates, our interns, our on-call advocates going out there to do hospital calls any, any hour of the day. You know, I will wake up to emails from, anywhere from eleven PM to four AM about a child or a teen or an older individual who needs our services, and those, those folks go out there, um, within an hour. And so that's amazing. Um, fifty of those people are children, so we really have an impact. And again, we work with the schools, so we can make sure that people know how to report to us and know how to seek our services, again, for free. Sixty-two percent of the people we work with have some kind of developmental brain health or other, other physical disability. Um, and people who are having any kind of disability are seven times more likely to be sexually abused as well. Um, twenty-five of the percent of the people that we serve are unsheltered, seventeen percent are LGBTQ or identify as that. Nine percent self-identify as male, and eight percent are Latinx, and we also have a bilingual advocate that works, again, trying to break down those barriers. And we know that that is not just in urban areas, but of course, the rural areas where there can be language barriers as well. Again, this is so important that you guys are able to help provide our funding, um, to provide the access to the survivors that we need. Um, and we meet people where they're at. We can ensure this by the really great relationship we make through our SART, our Sexual Assault Response Team, with Sarah Wenness. She works with law enforcement, hospitals, county attorneys, um, to make sure that there's a more trauma-informed sense of care for these survivor cases, and so that everyone knows how to um, approach these things in that sensitive manner as well. And create those good relationships, cuz trust is honestly one of those things that's very hard to work with when so much trust has been broken away from a survivor. It's just, it is just compounded trauma that we are trying to help uh, break down. And that's why going above and beyond and not just doing the basic counseling services and doing three-pronged approach, multi-channel approach is so important. Um, like as you said, we are facing those cuts from VOKA, um, we're facing a forty percent cut, and we don't know how that's gonna be allocated, so this funding is very crucial. So in closing, I will ask you for your support to continue to um, support the survivors in this county and especially in these rural areas where access is even harder. And you can make it possible for survivors um, with, to ensure these services without interruption. Um, and make sure that they receive that advocacy and um, the healing journey that they need. And we'll open it up for any questions that you have right now as well.
Any questions, Ward?
Uh, you said two hundred and sixty-four Blackhawk? Do you happen to have an estimate that you can provide later too, of how many outside of sort of the metro, outside of Waterloo Cedar Falls?
I can get that for you.
Okay.
If I don't have that right now, it's just the total of the Blackhawk area, but I will make a note to get you the breakdown.
Thank you.
I also want to add too that the um, federal VOKA funds, um, those come from restitution, um, not taxpayer dollars.
Are those VOKA funds, are they just sort of program underwriting, or are there, are there, assuming they're specific?
Yeah, they're, they're specific um, to, again, I will have to give you that specific answer, because VOKA funds, um, it's very like, it's obviously like um, restricted funds, so it's gonna be classed out um, for certain kinds of. It, it's, it usually gets handed down to three prongs of advocacy. prongs of advocacy, and it either gets allocated through like, domestic violence or sexual assault, or a mix of those, so.
Were there any other questions? Alright, well, I appreciate everything you're doing, thank you for being here.
We appreciate your previous support, we'll have to continue to gain it, thank you.
Hi, Board, um, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Alright, so moved in second.
Don't you dare.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Steve is just wants a aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you, everyone.